Happy. Okay, let me. Okay, very happy to welcome Rebecca McClellan to our meeting today. She and you've given some of your backgrounds, so I don't know. I'm just going to go over this for for the recording. Rebecca McClellan was selected for the Colorado State Board of Education, representing the sixth congressional district. And she was elected in November of 2016 to serve a six year term. She was then reelected in November of 2022 to serve her second term, and we just learned that you are term limited. So you added to that that knowledge. In January of 2023, state board chairwoman was unanimously chosen by her colleagues to serve in that position for a two year term. Prior to that, you served as a state board legislative liaison in 2021 and 2022 legislative sessions. And I I understand because I'm on the Legislative Action Committee for the league and rep and follow the education bills. We have been do we were doing similar work. So that, you know, that was interesting to me. You are a former mayor pro tem of the city of Centennial, where you were on the city council from 2006 to 2014. You also worked with the Bicycle with Bicycle Colorado to bring Centennial Schools their first safe routes to schools program. Another thing that I found very interesting. You have served as a PTO executive officer and on the executive board of your local district's legislative network. And are a graduate of Leadership Cherry Creek. Finally, as we go back, you are a graduate of San Diego State University. We were talking earlier about how several of us are from the California in one way or another. So that was interesting as well. And you were selected in 2017 for the Gates Fellow to the Harvard Kennedy School of Government Program for Senior Leaders in State and Local Governments. So I welcome you, and I'm really excited that you're here to share your your perspective, your state board perspective to us. I think it's it adds another piece of the puzzle of our understanding of education and the state. So I don't know if you want to start with us with a statement or how you want to. We could have been talking about this as we wait for people to come in. How you want to do this?
Sure, if you like, I can launch in and kind of give an overview of what we don't do and what we do do. So I know some of the topics that were suggested were what's going on at the legislature, and I can touch a little bit on that. For example, right before I jumped on this call, I did call one of our legislative staff members. We have an in house legislative staffer named Shelby Conkle. Those of you who frequent the Capitol may have met Shelby or our contract lobbyist Jennifer Mello with August Policy Solutions. But I touched base with Shelby before this call before this call, and she indicated that they are, as we speak, debating the long bill, which is the money. So I cannot tell you what has passed yet, but I can tell you it's going on while we're sitting here talking to each other. So that's kind of exciting. There'll be big asks. Our ask as a state board for that for the legislators was our operating expenses. So they will make a whole lot of decisions that do impact us, some of which will weigh in on, some of which we will not. We try to keep it kind of mission critical. So that brings me to the two biggest things I should remind everybody that we don't do. We don't legislate, and we don't hold the power of the purse. Now, we have a whole lot of responsibility as a pass through agency. And when I say we, I mean, the Department of Education, not the state board directly. But the Department of Education takes responsibility for implementation of a whole lot of dollars, making sure that they go where either the federal legislators or the state legislators intended that those dollars go and that they don't go where they were not intended. An example of that might be Read Act dollars. Those dollars are intended to go for the benefit of students who have a significant reading deficiency by grade three, and it's meant to help remediate that concern. We say that up until grade three, you're learning to read, and after grade three, you're reading to learn. So if there's a problem there, we want to make sure that we're bringing in the A that we're finding it, B that we're bringing in the reinforcements and taking care of it so we can get those kiddos back on track so that it doesn't negatively affect the rest of the trajectory of their academic career and their future. So that's one example of the kind of bill that we would weigh in on and why we would weigh in on it. But we have two legislative liaisons from our board. On the Republican side, it's Mr. Steve Durham of Colorado Springs. He has a vast amount of experience. He served for many years in our legislature, and he has lobbying experience as well. So he very well knows his way around the Capitol, and that has been an asset for us. On the Democratic side, we have Dr. Carla Esser, who does have a background in education, and that's what her PhD is in. And she represents the Democratic side. And together, working with our legislative staff and our contract lobbyists, they go through the education bills to try to find that which is fairly tightly focused on our mission or on our ability to operate. So if a law is passed across the street, and it has to do with education, and your Department of Education is going to have to do implementation, what will happen is first it will come to your state board of education, and we will have a rulemaking hearing in many cases, followed by the commissioner's staff, then making sure that they are implementing with fidelity to the law. But so we end up being the face of that policy, but we didn't get to legislate it. But we're the we're the entity that that the education world experiences that policy through. So we get to be the face of the policy, but we don't get to pick the policy. Sometimes we like it, sometimes we just comply. So that's the way that that relationship works. And so, for example, if they have indicated by legislating a particular bill that we are to do implementation, and we recognize that that's going to take quite a bit of staff, we might ask our lobbyists to try to fight to have a fiscal note attached so that we can pay for the implementation. Otherwise, we're going to be scrambling over at the department. We want to make sure that we're able to get the job done right and get every job done right. So if we're expected to have to staff up to take care of a challenging implementation task that we're responsible for, we want to make sure they provided for that in the bill. Because again, we don't have the power of the purse. We're a pass through agency, so if you look at the total budget, it looks huge. But in almost in the case of most of the dollars, those are going through your Department of Ed, and the Department of Ed is making sure that they go to the right place. I hope that's helpful. But our operating budget that we asked for this past year, I believe, is between eight and nine million.
Yep.
And I think the Department of Education employs between, I don't quote me on this, but I believe it is between six and 700 people. So we have everything from statisticians to our folks that go out to help with schools and districts that have been on the accountability clock and are on an improvement plan. Some schools and districts choose to go early and get their implement get the the improvement plan going a little bit early. But if you have been in the lowest two categories for at least five testing cycles, you come before the state board, and we bring in reinforcements to help make it better. Colorado, I'm very proud to say, has a better rate of actually being effective at improving those schools and districts where help is needed most, better than other states. We were above average in that regard, and we have a lot of bright spots. So a lot of innovation happening there and some good things too, especially if we have a willing partner at the local level. Sometimes we really are able to make a very positive difference as we have recently in Pueblo and also in Greeley, just as an example. I can touch on some of the more controversial things that you may hear about from the state board of education. I think number one that people think of after Colorado academic standards, which shouldn't really be controversial because they're pretty broad in general, and they're a floor and not a ceiling. And the curriculum really is pretty well under control at the local level, provided that they're meeting that minimum Colorado academic standard. But the other things that we do that kind of get a little bit of attention are charter school appeals. So if a charter operator comes to your local school district, and they would like to open a new charter school, and that local district decides that they want to deny that charter application, we are the board that hears the appeal. And I think the standard that we apply is the best interest of students, the school district, and the community. That's the standard that we are to apply. And I would say that if we have a preconceived notion about how we're going to vote on a case, the appropriate thing would be for that board member to recuse themselves, because we have an obligation to hear both parties take the evidence in and base our decision on that standard. So that's one of the things that your state board does that gets a little bit of attention. The other thing that we do that gets attention is the accountability system. Again, we have accountability hearings when a school or a district has been on the accountability clock in the lowest two categories for five consecutive testing cycles. And then if they haven't chosen to come before us early and put together a plan to to allow us to help them out and bring in the resources that may be helpful, then at that point, they would be ordered to come in, and we would have an accountability clock hearing, and we would bring in staff to keep tabs on that school or district to make sure that progress is happening. And very often, what you'll see is the state board assigning a management partner. That's not an untypical way to do it. So that might be someone like University of Virginia, who would come in and help ensure that the teachers are getting the resources they need to be as effective as possible in the classroom so that we can make sure that we bring that school district's growth and achievement up closer to the state average. I hope that helps give you a little bit of a window into what we do and what we don't do.
No, I had a question that just popped up when you were talking about the accountability clock. Did that did COVID impact what was happening with schools? And how, you know, in this way and, you know, and how?
Yes, we saw learning loss, not just across the country, but across the world. Colorado had a few rural districts with very low COVID case counts. Some, there were very small numbers, but there were some that did not close, and they may not have experienced the kind of learning loss that came from having to go online. It was very disruptive for families, very disruptive for school districts. I'll tell you, I'll go on the record, I am against this COVID-19, and you may quote me on that. But in all seriousness, I think one of the bits of data that it wasn't really a surprise to experts in the field, but it was a disappointment. If you were a student who was just beginning to try to master the operations of working with fractions, or, and I believe that's about fifth grade, or if you were a little bit older and you were just beginning to master algebraic concepts, and that's when we went remote, those students were especially hard hit in math. It was really, really disappointing because we were just getting really meaningful implementation of our Read Act bill that passed across the street with huge bipartisan support many years ago. It took us a long time to get that fully implemented. If I'm being candid, there was some resistance. Change can be tough. And but that bill required that we utilize curriculum that is aligned with the science of reading or evidence based literacy instruction. And just as we were getting that meaningful implementation of the Read Act out in the field, that's when the lockdowns began. And so I think we just, some of us were thinking, not that this is the biggest thing that COVID did, but can we please catch a break? We were so looking forward to seeing that breakthrough because literacy has been something that we have struggled with. And this isn't just a Colorado phenomenon. This is, just so you know, this this whole discussion around evidence based literacy instruction and the implementation thereof. When I go to national conferences, it's what everyone's talking about. They talk about the Mississippi miracle when they finally got implementation there. It it made a huge difference. One of the phenomenon that we see is parents of students with dyslexia have shared that in some cases, they've had just a very difficult time getting their student on an IEP. Some parents of means have even gone so far as to hire a psychologist to get their own private diagnosis, and some have brought lawyers to their IEP meeting. It's an expensive IEP, and some parents have reported that they've had resistance to getting their child those services. Now, I am not arguing that the science of reading or evidence based literacy instruction is all that a dyslexic child needs or is entitled to. But I am sharing that it may be the case that in in many cases, that is all that they might get. So it's vital that we at least give them that. So that's something that we hear from an organization called CoKid, and that stands for Colorado Parents of Kids with Dyslexia. So or Colorado Kids with Dyslexia. That's the organization name for those who are curious about that particular thread. So, yeah, we were just making meaningful progress on the literacy front when when we went remote. And I that was incredibly frustrating. On the bright side, though, I think that Universal Preschool, Universal Kindergarten, Full Day Kindergarten, those are going to have, I can't wait to see our assessment results coming back after those kids have been going through our, some of those youngest learners have been going through their early education, and we can see the results of that. That is something that I think a lot of us are really excited to see and really hopeful about.
So, yeah. Questions, people? Yes, Kathy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm really new to this committee, and I just moved here from Florida. So I don't know that much about Colorado education. But do you keep statistics on on your accountability by school district, by DEI categories? You know, LGBTQ or African American or Hispanic? Do you keep track of that so that you can see whether one school district might have more problems than others?
We do keep track of what we call the achievement gap. So, for example, if you are a parent of a Latino child, and you want to know, if I send my child to Cherry Creek High School, I can see that, on average, they may be doing really well in terms of achievement and growth. But how are they doing with children like mine? Or let's say your child is an English language learner. Same thing, we do, it's called disaggregated data. And we do have many of the groups we mentioned. I don't believe that we are academically, I've never seen a report teasing out LGBTQ kids in terms of growth and achievement. But we do look at ethnicity. And there is something called N size, and that is the size of the sample by which it is large enough to still provide privacy for the student. So if you are in Colorado's smallest school district, that would be Aggett, they have less than 100 students. You're not going to get a lot of disaggregated data out of Aggett because if we were to give you second grade data on an Aggett classroom, you would know which child we're talking about, or it might be one of two. So we're not going to, there are limits to how how small that sample size can get, but particularly in our suburban or urban districts. For example, there are over 80,000 students in Colorado's largest district. And as you might guess, that's Denver Public Schools. So that gives us plenty of room to be able to get those disaggregated groupings so that we can report out if there's a large achievement gap. And sometimes we do see that pop up. And sometimes that comes up when we're hearing appeals, charter appeals, because one of the things we're looking at is, is there a problem that's being solved? So I did cite those statistics when a school came before us called 5280 Freedom School. And and I did mention the achievement gap for the population that that school was hoping to serve, indicating that, yes, there is a challenge, and folks are wanting to address that challenge with this particular model. So that is a great question, and this is a great time for me to segue into. Let's see if I copied the correct link. I am the vice chair of the 1241 Task Force. Yes, I've got the right link. So popping up in your link right now should be a link to the page on the Colorado Department of Education website that will allow you to see the work of the Accountability and Accreditation and Assessment Task Force, also known as the 1241 Task Force. We are working to look at ways to use our assessment and accountability system to better address inequities that impact academic equity and academic outcomes and to enhance academic opportunity. So if you have thoughts on that topic, or you want to drop an article in the link, or you are aware of a study that you think our task force should be looking at, there is a survey that just opened, I believe it was yesterday or the day before. The deadline will be near the end of April, and that will be on that CDE page, where you can go through and go through that public survey. And it does include a section where you can upload, you know, if there's a letter to the editor that you thought was really spot on or a study. Other things we're looking at are promising practices from other states. Sometimes that's a challenge because, for example, when I cited that Mississippi miracle, where they were able to very quickly and very thoroughly adjust to evidence based literacy instruction, we cannot, we have a menu of curriculum that meets that requirement, but we cannot say everyone in the state of Colorado will buy this particular textbook. We're forbidden in our constitution from doing that, which might be a good thing. That might be why you don't hear of Colorado in what they have sometimes referred to as the textbook wars. We are a state where there's a great deal of local control. But what that also means is if there's an issue that's really, really important to you. So, for example, when we were revising our social studies standards, right after I first got onto the board, I think it was 2017 or 2018, I was contacted by then Congressman Mike Kaufman's office because members of the Sikh community wanted to know, how do we get our information into Colorado textbooks? They were successful in doing that in Texas. I had to tell them, I can very, I can add the word Sikhism to our list of world religions, but I can't tell them exactly what text to put in the textbook, and I can't tell them what textbooks to choose. So we were successful in including them in a list of world religions recognized in our broad Colorado academic standards. But if members of the Sikh community would really appreciate having that more robust verbiage that they were hoping for, it is a district by district job to get that information out to the districts. Does that give a little bit of a window?
Yes.
Okay.
More questions, Kathy?
You know, sorry, you mentioned the Read Act and that COVID had put you back a couple steps. How much have you recovered since COVID sort of settled down?
We're seeing a steady rise. We're seeing a steady rise, and we're coming back. So we are, we're seeing a return to pre-COVID levels. We'd have to look precisely to see it. Not every classroom, not every school, not every district will be right on the mark for where they were for the 2018 or 2019 testing cycle. But we're seeing improvements. I think those big challenge points did come in math instruction, and I think that's why you saw the governor's office working so hard to to introduce that math bill that allows the wraparound services. It allows particularly students who are at risk of not experiencing academic equity to be able to receive math tutoring and instruction after school and through programs like the Boys and Girls Club. So and I believe he may even have used some of the discretionary budgetary funds from his own gubernatorial budget to make that happen, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe don't quote me on that one, but I hope I'm not misremembering. But that was, I know, a terrific response and a terrific commitment to try to address what we did recognize was a problem. It was a disappointing result when we saw what happened in math. But then, when you unpacked it, you could understand, any of us who remember learning how to deal with fractions or learning how to deal, learning how to master the concepts of algebra. If anyone thought we could just replace wonderful professional in person teachers with something online, I recognize that sometimes works for some students, but in particular for our youngest learners and for really complex concepts, like working with fractions and the order of operations and working to master algebraic concepts, that in person math instruction is is very important. That's one of the things that we learned. And so working double time to try to make sure that those cohorts are able to catch up and get back on track is a high priority.
Deb?
Deb, sorry, had to unmute. If the school district doesn't follow the department's standards for teaching history from a diverse inclusive perspective, would the board know about this? And what actions would the board take?
Oh, gosh, thank you for the question, Deb. I suspect that that would probably take a parental complaint. I know that we've had folks express concern. But we we don't have a squad of stormtroopers going into your local classroom. It would be impossible. There are more than 800,000 students in the state of Colorado. You can just imagine we would be having to look backwards and prove that a lesson or a minimum level of teaching did not happen over the course of a year that's in the rearview mirror. So I suppose what would have to happen would be a student indicating, I didn't get A or B or C, and it's in the state standards, and my parents are going to take action, and we're going to file a report. I would have to phone a friend and ask. Our legal counsel is with the Office of the Attorney General, and that would be the party that I would then ask if we were to receive such a complaint. We would be going to our our legal counsel and asking, okay, what happens now? They do sign off indicating that that is their intent to meet those minimum Colorado academic standards. And I'm not aware that we've received a complaint like that. One point that I would want to make clear to everyone on this call and and anyone I talk to on this topic is you may have heard that there was a motion made during the last time that your Colorado State Board of Education revised the social studies standards. A motion was made to adopt instead of the Colorado Task Force developed social studies standards that were recommended to us, that we adopt something called American Birthright, and that our state board of education, on a party line vote, went ahead and voted against that motion, but instead chose to adopt the recommended Colorado academic standards as developed by those who volunteered to be a part of a more than year long task force working on developing Colorado's academic standards. What I would emphasize is, as long as a district is actually meeting the minimum Colorado academic standards, I cannot tell you that they are out of compliance based on something that they added to that. So we, our action, to my knowledge, doesn't make it illegal for any district to utilize an additional curriculum, provided they still meet the minimum Colorado academic standards. That's a little tricky, I know. That's it's going to feel a little nuanced, but that's, it's important for us to remember that. Unless there is something in that curriculum that directly conflicts with our standard, they do have local control. So as long as they've got that cake on the bottom, they can add the icing that they want to add. They're not required to get it all from one book. You could have a variety of books from which you cover at least the minimum of the Colorado academic standards. I'll pause in case there are questions about that nuanced differentiation. Nuanced differentiation between broad academics, minimum standards. And that local control that our constitution requires for actual curriculum and textbooks.
So, you know, the nuanced part doesn't sound terribly difficult, but. My concern is, um. If a school district is not providing textbooks or instruction that meet the minimum standards, what happens?
That would be something that we would want to have an executive session with our legal counsel about to ask. Are they still eligible for um, grants that are dependent upon their. And state dollars that are dependent upon their willingness to. Have agreed in good faith to meet those Colorado academic standards. So, um, I have not seen a complaint of that nature yet. If we do. I believe that your State Board of Education would be having a conversation with the legal counsel. To determine what do we do next? Does this mean they lose their accreditation? Does this mean they learn that they lose certain funding streams? If so, which ones? That would be new ground, um, at least for the time that I've been on the board. I haven't seen that happen yet. Okay, thanks. Thank you for the question.
Other questions?
I see Diane has her hand up.
Um, Rebecca, I have been on numerous accountability committees. From the school to the district one. Um, could you just breathe briefly um, explain how those are. Uh, supposed to work, but because to me they seem like just rubber stamping whatever the principal wants.
Oh, the accountability committees?
The, the count, yeah, and so much more I think could happen in those. If we knew how to work them.
Yeah, um, so. I can tell you, we're on the state board, we're kind of an end user of that data. One of the things that I always want to impress on patient, on, on uh, parents is. We use that data to help. Schools and districts with kids who need it the most. So these are the kids, by the time they're testing in the bottom two testing categories for five consecutive testing cycles, either for growth. Or for achievement. We've got a problem and they need help. So when people opt their kids out of the test. It blows holes through the data. So it's not that I'm expecting to see. Cherry Creek High School or Fairview High School or some of the high schools that. Are really blessed with uh, an abundance of resources relative to other schools and districts. And many of those students may be going home at the end of their school day to someone who's. Fully prepared to help them with the most complex math or um, history assignment. There are many students in Colorado that need more support than that. And we want to make sure that we're not leaving them out of the cold and leaving them behind. We want to make sure that we're able to identify. Where do we have a gap in terms of the progress that students are making from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year? And where do we have? Inequities in terms of the achievement level so that we can use our scarce, limited resources to help and make it better. Um, so that's what I hope folks on those accountability committees would hear. Because sometimes. We get the squeaky wheel from some accountability committees. That maybe find these tests to be perhaps annoying. Maybe they don't see how it benefits their. Student. It's benefiting the whole state when we are able to better identify where we have a challenge. That really helps us to be good stewards of the public tax dollars and to bring in the reinforcements and bring in the supports, whether it's. Um, schools cubed or whether it's um, University of Virginia or another high quality. Uh, partner to come in and help make sure that we're making it better in the classroom so we can have more equitable outcomes before it's too late for those students that need it the most. So in some cases, we're asking. Parents and students to care about that standardized test. Knowing that it's going to end up helping someone else's child. And to please, please do it anyway, because it gives us that complete picture. So, for example, my kids graduated in twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, so I'm not getting those reports as a mom anymore, but when I did. If the Cherry Creek District was exemplary at giving me the transparency I needed. Um, and I did drop um, some links to our Department of Education on the website and you can look at testing data there as well. Uh, but it would tell me how my child is doing compared to the standards. How my child is doing compared to the peers, their cohort in the building. In their school and how are they doing compared to their peers across their school district? And finally, how are they doing compared to the average performance across the state of Colorado for their cohort? Um, their expected anticipated graduating class. So that, that really just tells me very clearly. Where do they stand on their building? Where do they stand in their district? Where do they stand? Uh, across the state of Colorado and where do they stand in relation to the district? Are they on track? Are we getting the job done? Or do we, do we need to? Take action and make sure that we're making the situation better. Um, that kind of clarity, some parents reporting that not every parent is getting that clear data, or maybe they're not getting it in their language. Um, it's essential that we make sure parents are able to know how their child is doing, because it's hard to advocate for what you're not getting. If you don't realize that it's not where it needs to be. Um, I think those accountability committees, there may be some latitude at the district level. In terms of how they're run. Um, so. You may see some that are. Um. Operating with a little more autonomy and some where it may feel a little more tightly controlled. And that, in my experience, that hasn't been something that the Department of Education interferes with. That's kind of a, a school district level. School district level function. Um, but you can go around to your. Your state board member and you can go to your Department of Education. That website is a wealth of information and it teases out all kinds of data. Um, there is another tool that I did put in the chat before it ends up too high and people lose track of it. It says financial transparency. I do want to call that out. Um, our legislators, in my opinion, very wisely, this was a bill that I really appreciate that they ran. It required our department to create a financial transparency website. It'll tell you what the per pupil funding is in your district and you can do a couple of districts side by side. So you can just pick a district anywhere in the state of Colorado. And it'll break down for you where the money's coming from, how much the per pupil funding is. It's a great tool and very interesting. So, um, when you have time. And you want to look in, if, if you want to compare, for example, Littleton Public Schools and Cherry Creek, or you want to look at Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools and um. Uh, Littleton Public Schools and you want to do a side by side, it'll let you do that. Did that help? I don't know if I answered your question, Diane.
Well, and I think too, um, are the administrators getting the training on how to use these accountability committees? Because it sounds, seems to me like they could be used better. Maybe I'm just. My experience has been that. It's like, why did I go to this meeting? Except to rubber stamp whatever the principal said.
Uh, well.
I think we're missing out on a resource here.
Yeah, I, yeah, I hear you. I hear you. Um. It's okay to go around to your legislator as well. Um, I will tell you, there is an advocacy organization for every function that you can imagine. So, and, and sometimes that's great and sometimes that can create a little bit of a silo effect. Um. Yeah. But we, we do not muscle in and. We, we have not gone in and, and given superintendents um, a difficult time for um. For what they do there. That's probably not within the purview of our powers and duties. Um. But. You know, those. The requirements to have. Uh, public outreach in that manner is usually the result of legislation. So.
When did it start? Do you know?
That I don't know. I know it's been around for a very long time. My kids, um, it, it. I've been aware of that mechanism existing throughout probably most of my kids' academic careers and they graduated in twenty sixteen and twenty. Twenty and. I, I know it was there when they were in high school. Um. So I'm not sure exactly when that bill. Passed. I apologize.
Um, other questions? I'm gonna add that I was listening to the, the Senate um, committee, Education Committee yesterday. As they passed um. Through the committee SB one eighty-eight, which is the public school finance. And they were so excited. And they were so emotional in their voice. And. There was a standing ovation. For the committee, for the, the sponsors. Of that bill. Um, because one of the things, one of the important things that it did was finally get rid of the budget stabilization factor. So that has been. You know, resolved and um. Permanently. Uh. What, what do I want to say? Um, giving rural schools more equity in the funding that they're, that they have been getting for the last eight years. Which is really important um, as well. I'm, I'm.
Kathy, can I jump in really quick? How many of you on this call are from rural Colorado or living where there's a rural school district? Diana is. All right, so um. I want to share over seventy percent of school districts in Colorado are rural school districts. And a number of your State Board of Education members live in what is arguably suburban or urban areas. In fact. It may be the case that all of us do, even those of us who have rural school districts in our district. I don't know why that is, but I don't have a single local school district that is rural in nature in the sixth congressional district. That doesn't mean there aren't rural properties, but as you probably know, Diana, the. Challenges that rural school districts face in terms of economy of scale, geographic isolation. Uh, recruiting and retaining great teachers and administrators, those are huge challenges for them. Especially when you start looking at the need for um, a highly qualified high school level science teacher, for example, or math teacher. Sometimes it's hard to get folks that fit that exact requirement to Burlington, Colorado, ten miles from the Kansas border. It can be challenging to get them to Montezuma Cortez. Uh, but you want your students to be able to benefit. One of the things that we do on the state board is take our meetings off-site. We try to do that with some regularity. We try to do it at least once a year. Um, so we were in the San Luis Valley last year. And um, in June, we're going to have our meeting um, up in Glenwood Springs in the hopes of also being accessible to a number of the BOCs. Um, so that's kind of like the equivalent of um. Uh, of a school district for, it's, it's a cooperative for. I can see Diana mouthing the words. I'm trying to think of what the acronym B O C E S. I'll think of it as.
Educational Services?
Board of. Board of Educational Services. You got it. Thank you, Diana. Yeah, so we're, that's why Glenwood Springs. Um, so we can make ourselves available to quite a number of the BOCs that are geographically close to that area. And we try, they have all different kinds of challenges and every rural district is different. In some cases, it's just straight up geographic isolation in a place where it's hard to get folks to move and stay. Um, but in other cases, it can be the cost of housing for teachers. So, you know, if you could be in a rural district, that's absolutely gorgeous and you might think, who wouldn't want to live here? Well, if you can't afford it, that would be a problem as well. So, yeah. Um, we do try to uh, make it out to have our meetings on-site and really be there to really. Take the tours and experience life in that district so we can understand the challenges. That um, those districts are facing. That's not necessarily the majority of. Uh, public school students being served in those districts. But um, because of the geography, it, it is over seventy percent of our local school districts in Colorado, some of them quite small. Um, but they still have to get the job done and. Um, we still want to make sure that our policies are sensitive to the challenges that they're facing so we can be um, of help as they try to get the job done.
Well, we are over our time, even though we started late. Um, Kathy, why don't you be the, our last question?
Uh, um, do you have any control over teacher certification or requirements or? Um, trying to encourage the supply of teachers, things like that?
That is such a timely and great question. Yes, we do. Um, we have a Department of Teacher Talent and absolutely, that's one of the things that we do. Um, so, uh, yes, we do that for regular classroom teachers. Um, and then also for substitute teachers. In fact, we had an interesting case before us. Um, if you go to the Colorado State um. Board page, you can watch any of our past meetings and the last uh, meeting. That we had on Thurs- the Thursday part, the second day of our last meeting in March. Um, we had a request for a waiver of licensure for substitute teachers out of Elizabeth School District. Um, we did deny that request and I want to share with you a little bit of why, though I was quite candid on the record. Um, we require fingerprinting and a background check. Um, and it usually takes only about one day, according to our staff, to get that done and it's about sixty dollars. It is essential. Because the folks that are going into the classroom have access to someone else's child. That is the minimum that we have got to do. So although they indicated that they would like to skip that step and have it handled by a private firm. Um, we did deny that particular request. Um, and from what we're hearing, it's possible we may have other districts coming before us with a similar request. Um, I did vote no on a similar request a number of years ago. Um, and that was in Fal- I believe it was Falcon Forty School District. But at that time, the prevailing vote was yes, and so there is one school district that got that request okayed. Um. Even in the case of charter school. Teachers who are not licensed. They still have to get that fingerprinting and background and that's done through the Colorado Bureau of Investigations, so there's still that state oversight. Although I'm not at liberty to talk about the individual cases, I can share with you that. I can't recall a meeting where we didn't have a disciplinary matter that reminds us why we have those background checks. Now that is for the whole state of Colorado that we end up seeing those cases, but it's important. Um, so subcontracting our responsibility out to a private firm that has a profit motive associated with that placement. Is not something I was comfortable with and so I was a no vote and um. And that motion did, or that request did fail and we did not grant that um. Waving of that minimal requirement.
Are there any other requirements, like educational requirements?
We have. We have a great many pathways into the classroom, but there are, um, there are minimum requirements, yes. And so, um, if you like, um, I can follow up with the menu. I, I believe it is available on our website. But in case it takes a bit of digging to find, I can follow up and make sure that we send. Kind of a snapshot of the pathways into the classroom. Um, we have everything from troops to teachers trying to get veterans to consider coming into the profession. It has been a challenge. Um, as many of you may realize, Colorado has some of the most expensive housing in the country. Um, and um, our teachers in some cases simply don't make enough. And so, um, the recruitment and retention has been a challenge. Um, and that is something we're very aware of. So making sure that we're meeting minimum standards and supporting the professionalism of the job. Is something our teacher talent department has worked closely with our state board and with groups like um, the Colorado Education Association. American Federation of Teachers, our professional teacher organizations, um. Colorado Association of School Executives. Our staff works closely. Um, to make sure that we're doing the very best we can to get the most professional, professional teaching force. But also leaving enough pathways open that we can keep those classrooms staffed. And making sure that we are meeting our responsibility to have those fingerprints done and those background checks done. So that we are doing our part to make our schools as safe as we can for other people's children.
Hmm, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for the question.
One final question. What can we as league members do? To help support education, help support what, what the State Board of Education is doing?
Oh, I love it. Um, you know. During this past um, few years, I have sometimes felt badly for our local elected school board members. If you have it in your heart to consider running for your local elected school board, that is very often also a voluntary position. But. Anything you can do to let them know how appreciated they are. they are usually not paid either. But because people have sometimes a tendency to get pretty fired up about what's happening in their local school, sometimes they have really been on the firing line, especially through COVID. And, um, and with respect to the feelings that some people have about books in the library, for example. And it's, it's been a little bit of a rough ride for those local school board members. In so many cases, that's just your neighbor who's wanting to make the local schools as good as they can be. Maybe they have a child in the local school system and they just want to make sure that kids are learning to the best of their ability and that they're taking a turn being responsible for their local school district. Um, there have been so many times when I have almost felt badly saying, that's not the state board, that's your local board, knowing that I'm sending someone over there and that local board is about to, to get some ire, you know? Um, so I have thanked them on the record every chance I get. Um, if you yourself don't want to run for a local school board position, think about who might, um, be a great fit for that duty. And maybe think about helping them along the way as they put their hat in the ring to serve your local community. I always say, holding public office is really about asking for and accepting temporary responsibility on behalf of your neighbors. Um, so anything you can do to help create a supportive environment there is terrific. And I think you all do a great job, um, with your forums. It really is very respectful of voters because you run a fair forum and it gives everybody a chance to learn about the candidates in an atmosphere where the candidates can walk away knowing they have been treated fairly. Um, and that is so very good for the whole process. Wherever someone falls on the political spectrum, the candidates want to know they've been treated fairly. The voters want to know that they got access and were able to get the information that they could hear without people shouting over one another. And you provide a valuable service and I'm, I'm grateful and I thank you for it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, and Beth, I don't know if you want to say anything to end up. Um, this, the recording though, will be available um, on our, on our league, uh, state league YouTube, um, channel. So, thank you so much for, for chatting with us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all. It was a great pleasure to be with you. Thanks for the invitation. All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Apologies again for any technical difficulties.
Don't worry.
Good night all. Thank you.
Have a good evening.